I see.
Hi, Matt. Hi, Maureen.
Hi. How are you, Frank?
Good.
Hey, Matt.
How are you?
It was great seeing you for a few minutes the other day.
You also. It was good to be in the building.
Oh, it's great to be in the building. I love it. It's like a Christmas present to be able to come back to work and building.
Okay, I think we've got a, I think we've got a quorum, Madam Clerk. Are you ready? Gary, are we ready?
Ready to go when you are, Mr. President.
Let me just make sure. I just got your text about connectivity. Let me just shut down things. All right. How is the video and audio okay?
Good. Yep.
Great. Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Boston City Council virtual meeting. My name is Matt O'Malley, and I'm the Council President pro tempore. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, the Boston City Council is conducting this meeting remotely. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, as we begin, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Certainly, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
She's running a little late.
Oh, perfect. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I will now prevail upon the clerk to please offer some inspiring words as our invocation. Madam Clerk, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, I should say.
Good morning.
Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life that we hold is a mystery and precious. May we this day be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them and so that we may fulfill, that we may fulfill in carrying them out and be faithful to those goals. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations, understanding our shortcomings, and forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with breath, be filled with enthusiasm, and be ready to see fresh opportunity, new perspectives, and unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. May we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtues of caring and concern, honesty and respect, the virtue of charity, industry, and patience. And may the members of the Boston City Council maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and called to be a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Those beautiful, inspiring words. Now, ask everyone that is able to please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
The republic is one nation under God.
And just for all.
Justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you again, Madam Clerk. I do apologize. I, my, we're turning into that viral city council perhaps from Great Britain, but is my connectivity okay? Can you hear me, Madam Clerk? I seem to see a lot of frozen faces.
I, frozen, but we can hear you.
All right. Very good. Well, please amend the, please amend the attendance report to reflect Counselors Edwards, Asabi George, and I believe we've just been joined by Counselor Wu is present.
All present, Mr. President.
Thank you. Today, we will have a presentation by Jazz Boston in celebration of International Jazz Day, which is this April 30. This is a recent, relatively recent tradition started by Counselor Wu, something I look forward to every year. Obviously, last year was, I don't believe we had it because of being remote, but where there's a will, there's a way. And I'd like to now turn the microphone over to Counselor Wu to say a few words about Jazz Boston and International Jazz Day before the presentation begins. Counselor Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I apologize for being late to the meeting. I'm so, so excited to welcome Jazz Boston once again. This has now become an annual tradition, and we're grateful to have Ken Field and Pauline Bilskey to thank for that. We've gone from having large performances in the council chamber to kick off our meetings to, for last year on Zoom, and so this year, we are hopefully going to have the last virtual presentation again with a special performance and recording that has been done. But we're so grateful for lifting up Boston's legacy of paving the way and having such incredible depth of talent in our artist community and jazz being a huge part of that. So, thank you again so much, Jazz Boston, for all that you do for our city, and we thank you again for being with us for International Jazz Week once more.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wu. And Ken or Pauline, I don't know if you've got any remarks before we get into the presentation?
I do. Thank you. And by the way, it's nice to see my predecessor, Pauline Bilskey, here in this meeting. Hi, Pauline. Thank you, Council President O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and members of the City Council for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Field. I'm the Board President of Jazz Boston, a 15-year organization that advocates for the Boston area jazz community of musicians, audiences, venues, and media. We advocate for jazz because we feel that it is a valuable component of our cultural landscape. There are many reasons jazz is important, but I want to briefly mention two of them. First, jazz was a creation of the African-American community, and we think there is great value in recognizing that contribution and shining a bright spotlight on it. Second, jazz is, at its heart, a music of spontaneous, individual, and collaborative creativity, a good model for life, which often requires nimble and spontaneous reactions to changing situations, as we've all learned over the past year. We're here today to recognize this Friday, April 30, as International Jazz Day, which was established in 2011 by UNESCO, the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, with the mission of highlighting jazz and its diplomatic role of uniting people in all corners of the globe. This American invention of jazz has spread worldwide, and today, we will share with you a very short performance by a Boston-based trio of internationally-born jazz musicians. The Jazz World Trio consists of Argentinian drummer Guillermo Nochesewitz, Swedish bassist Bruno Reberg, and South African pianist Witness Matlu. They'll perform Guillermo's composition, "Tre Sargentos," which he tells me is the name of a street in Buenos Aires where he grew up. He says, "The music I wrote is intense but has a sad feel. That's where my dad, who was a visual artist, had his last art studio." You can get more information about what we do at Jazz Boston by visiting jazzboston.org, where you can also become a member for free. I also want to express my appreciation to Cara Elliott Ortega and her staff in the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture for their support and advice. And if you want to hear more from this great trio, Jazz Boston is collaborating with GBH Radio to present a free streaming concert titled Jazz Now: No Borders this Friday at 8:00 p.m. While it's free, you need to reserve a ticket, which you can do via the link at jazzboston.org. And now, I think, here is the Jazz World Trio with "Tre Sargentos," unless Pauline has something to say in addition.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to thank President O'Malley for making the time to celebrate International Jazz Day again this year, and thank you all for your support and encouragement during the years I was president of Jazz Boston. And Power of Jazz, the new organization I'm setting up, shares your vision, shares your vision of the city that Boston can and should be, and I hope we'll be able to work with you to help make that happen. And I think you're going to hear a brief concert representation at the end of the meeting of probably the most moving jazz anthem that's ever been written and by a wonderful saxophonist, Bobby Tynes, and that is "Peace on Earth." And I hope you'll all stay because I guarantee that you will go out with a lighter heart and a lighter step if you listen to it. Thanks again.
Thank you, Pauline. Thank you, Ken. And Ken, please, I think we have you queued up.
Oh, nice.
Well done. That was, that was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. Wonderful way to start the meeting. So, thank you, Ken, for your great work and coming to us, and Pauline. Look forward to hearing the piece to close out the meeting as well that you referenced. Madam Clerk, did I also ask you to amend the eight minutes to reflect that Counselor Asabi George has joined us as well?
Yes, you did.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to communications from her honor, the mayor. Would you please read in place before the body, docket 0594?
Certainly. Docket 0594, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding An Act to Certain Affordable Housing in the Jamaica Plain Section of the City of Boston."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0594 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0595?
Thank you. Docket 0595, message in order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $45,590 in the form of a grant from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Care Act awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts to be administered by the Arts, the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund sub-awards to help save jobs in the arts sector and keep the doors open to arts organizations.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Chair Michael Flaherty, Chairman of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
There's 20 minutes, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to move for suspension in passage. Obviously, it's not a huge item, but it obviously goes to the arts. And so, it's a $45,590,000 grant from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security. And the grant was awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts and is to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. And this grant will help fund sub-awards to help sustain our arts community by saving the jobs in the arts organizations in sector of Boston. So unless there's a compelling interest, I really think that, you know, our creative economy is a very special and important wheel in the city's economic cycle. And so, I know that I've heard from a number of folks in the community, in the arts community personally and specifically that, that these precious dollars will go to immediate use. And so, I'm inclined, as the Chair, to move for suspension in passage of this grant today so that the funds could be used expeditiously to support our arts organizations here in the city.
Thank you very much. Counselor Flaherty is Chair of the Committee. Chair Flaherty moves for suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0595. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0595. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Thank you. Counselor Mejia. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0595 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to call for a brief one-minute recess, just to deal with my connectivity issues. So, just one-minute recess, please.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is my sound a little bit better and video a little bit better?
Much better. Much better.
I'd ask my colleagues to, I'd ask my colleagues to bear with me. I'm going to have to use my iPhone to run this meeting due to, I guess, poor connectivity. So, I will be scrolling through when people wish to speak on anything, but it's a little bit more difficult than using the laptop or the desktop. So, nevertheless, this seems to be a little bit better. I can see you all better. So, we are moving right along now to docket 0596. The Chair recognizes Counselor, excuse me, Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0596?
Certainly. Docket 0596, message in order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $25,567 in the form of a grant for the FY '20 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Formula allocation awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through Massachusetts State Police Crime Laboratory, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund training and continuing education for forensic examiners, criminalists, and laboratory personnel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and you still look fabulous. All good. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. President. This grant is pretty self-explanatory in the amount of $25,567, and it's a grant we've received before from the United States Department of Justice. It passes through the State Police Department, the Crime Laboratory, to our department to fund training, continuing education, of course, for forensic examiners, criminalists, and laboratory personnel. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeking suspension of the rules in passage of this docket, which is relatively small, to be used immediately by the Police Department to fund these purposes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0596. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0596. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0596 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0597 through 0599 together?
Thank you. Docket 0597, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of March 17, 2021. Docket number 0598, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the City Council in its meeting of March 31, 2021. In docket number 0599, communication was received from the Council President pro tempore, O'Malley, designating Counselor Asabi George as a member of the Special Commission to End Family Homelessness.
Thank you very much. Docket 0597 through 0599 shall be placed on file. Moving right along to reports of committees. Madam Clerk, would you please place before the body docket 0452?
Thank you. Docket 0452, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on March 24, 2021. Docket number 0452, message in order changing the date of the preliminary election for the municipal year from September 21, 2021 to September 14, 2021. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President pro tempore. So, I want to apologize for any background noise that you hear. There's a lot of construction happening on my street. So, if at any point it becomes too much, or if you don't hear me, please let me know right away. I'm assuming everyone is fine right now with the, with the background noise. And in short, this is the quick summary of the legislation, as this was sponsored by former Mayor Martin J. Walsh, essentially to move the date of the preliminary election to September 14, 2021, the seventh Tuesday preceding these general election pursuant to the authority in mass general laws, Chapter 54, Section 103p. And the transmittal letter, former Mayor Martin Walsh, indicated that because of the potential expansion of vote by mail to include fall elections, the timeframe for certifying election results in the Election Department's requirement to hold ballot position drawing, the original date of September 21 would create a challenge for the printing and distribution of vote by mail ballots. Therefore, he submitted, or felt that it would be prudent, to move the date up a week. The Elections Department, excuse me, the City of Boston Elections Department Commissioner Anita Tavarez participated on behalf of the administration in support of the docket. Commissioner Tavarez testified that with the potential of the expansion of vote by the mail, again, the department will have a tight turnaround between the preliminary election and general election if it is continually to stay at September 21. Commissioner Tavarez, of course, explained that no matter what, the Election Department would meet whatever standards and goals that were necessary, but she felt that there's, because the ballots are sent to the printer after the certification process and the ballot position drawings occur, that this one week would be very helpful.
He set it up.
Commissioner Tavarez stated that the general election must be held on the first Tuesday in November, that there was no way that we can move that back. We heard, also, we also heard public testimony from Patrick Growth, who is an advocate for safe elections and signature gathering. The committee discussed the city's authority to proceed with the order as opposed to a home petition. We also discussed the impact on a general election if the date of the preliminary election is not changed. The committee inquired about the certification process and printing of ballots, and the committee discussed other options, including with the date of the election. But we finally discussed what happens if a recount occurs and its impact, and also safe collection of signatures. So, essentially, we use this opportunity to really have a robust conversation as the committee about our process in this particular election this year. I, as the Chair of the Committee on Government Ops, actually recommend that we should, I submit this report, and hoping for your approval, and recommend that this ought to pass because I believe that the city's Elections Department explained that changing the date of the preliminary election will allow for the Election Department to move more efficiently, and I trust their judgment. And therefore, I do think that we should, we should pass this order, and I hope that you will accept the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. I'm just going to scroll through to see. I'm just going to scroll through to see if anyone wishes to speak on this. If anyone does, please raise your physical hand. It's just probably easier as I'm scrolling through, not seeing any further discussion on docket 0452. Counsel Edwards seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0452, which, of course, would change the date of preliminary election this fall. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0452, Counselora Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselora Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
Present.
Counsel Asabi George, present. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0452 has passed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0369 and place it before the body?
Certainly. Docket 0369, Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 3, 2021. Docket number 0369, an ordinance restricting the use of chemical crowd control agents and kinetic impact projectiles. Submit a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I'm just going to ask that my colleagues bear with me. This will be a long report, and I just feel that thoroughness is necessary at this moment. Dear Counselors, this is, this matter was originally sponsored by Counselors Arroyo and Counsel Andrea Campbell. Was referred to the committee on March 3, and the committee held a working session on April 9. As, as you all recall, we voted, our majority of this council body voted pass this ordinance last year, and that is why, when this was brought up again, this, and of course, at the time, former Mayor Martin J. Walsh vetoed this matter. This was brought up again this year, and we moved straight to a working session to get down to the language and to make sure that any questions or concerns that the Boston Police Department advocates and also our colleagues had could be, again, answered and discussed. I'm going to summarize the legislation. This legislation will limit the use of chemical crowd control agents, CCAs, and kinetic impact projectiles, KIPs or KIPs, here and after referred to, again, as CCAs or KIPs, by the Police Department and other law enforcement officers in Boston during lawful protests, demonstrations, or other gatherings involving more than 10 persons. The legislation provides an exemption to this limitation if an on-scene supervisor authorizes the use in response to ongoing acts of violence or destruction of property. The on-scene supervisor authorizing the use must have personally witnessed the violent acts or destruction of the property and determine that other methods of de-escalation will not be successful. The on-scene supervisor must be the rank, be at the rank of deputy superintendent or higher before the use of these crowd control agents. Two separate warnings must be given at least two minutes apart over loudspeaker system. There's also a two-minute wait after the full reading of the second warning before any chemical crowd or CCAs or KIPs can be used. Legislation contains the enforcement provisions, the required notice and reporting requirements. Violations of the ordinance will constitute an injury for which any person may constitute proceedings to enforce. Prevailing individuals would be entitled to recover trouble damages. I wanted to note that the latest working session, we went line by line through the definitions and through all of the aspects of this ordinance. I want to thank the lead sponsors and several of our colleagues for coming there. Unfortunately, the Boston Police Department did not thoroughly formally participate, but I do want to thank, again, the advocates for coming. Information gathered at the working session and some of the discussion. The committee reviewed the background of the ordinance and its procedural history. The committee discussed that the legislation was a refile from last year, as I explained earlier. Again, the mayor had vetoed it. And the committee also discussed that the scope covering all law enforcement officers is not clear and preempted by state, if it was not clear, it is preempted by state and federal law, and that the certain provisions conflicted with the police commissioner's authority over discipline. So those are some of the concerns expressed by former Mayor Martin J. Walsh, and those are the things that we discussed and smoothed out some of the language to make sure that there was no conflict, and that we also made sure that the commissioner's authority was not at all questioned. The committee discussed the provision that conflicted with the police commissioner's authority, that specifically dealing with discipline. The committee reviewed the language of the ordinance by each section, as I mentioned, line by line. The committee also discussed the meaning of other law enforcement officers. Again, this was intended to be broadened over to ensure that officers acting under the authority of Boston Police Department would be subject to the same mandates. This is not the say that if there are federal agents in here on a different investigation or responding to something different, a terrorist act, or so on and so forth, that they would, they would not necessarily be required to comply with this. The committee discussed the requirement that the unlawful activity must be personally seen on these, seen by the on-scene supervisor, and what did that mean? Specifically, what does it mean to personally see? As, as we discussed, a protest can be very large. One person can physically be at one end and not see anything, but there could be a concern at the other end. They discussed that personally witnessed may be seen by video or other methods of technology, TV, so on and so forth, or drone. So the committee also discussed reasonable methods of de-escalation. What exactly did that mean? The committee interpreted reasonable de-escalation to be methods used under the Boston Police Department's guidelines already there, including the warning system and training. The committee discussed the damages section, and specifically the city's fiduciary responsibility. There was a concern expressed by one of our colleagues about the word "shall" being there for trouble damages versus "may." And we also discussed the availability of body camera video. Essentially, we wanted to make sure that there was a requirement that after any use of a CCA or a KIP in any protest or any point in the protest, that there would be body camera, excuse me, body camera footage being required to be given to the public and made available. So I'm going to quickly summarize some of the amendments that came from that discussion. So again, there were amendments based off of different parts, concerns, and also trying to respond to former Mayor Martin Walsh's concerns. So specifically, 11-1.10(c) subsection 1, restriction on the use of chemical crowd control agents and KIPs. The first sentence is amended after the term "other law enforcement officers" to include the following words: "to extent permissible under law." The first sentence is amended as follows, subject to the limitations set forth in paragraph 2 below. Boston police officers and other law enforcement officers working in the City of Boston, to the extent permissible by law, shall not use a kinetic impact projectile or chemical crowd control agent against any person or persons engaged in a protest demonstration or other gathering of any kind involving more than 10 persons. In section 11-1-110d, subsection 4, the word "shall" in the second section shall be stricken and changed to "may," as we discussed with the, with the trouble damages. And the section, also in section D, subsection 5, all uses of any kinetic impact projectile or any chemical crowd control agent in all violations of this ordinance by Boston Police Office or any other law enforcement officer shall, working in the City of Boston, shall be reported in writing, including the name of the member of law enforcement. Section 11-1-110d is also amended by adding a new subsection 6, which provides as follows: Immediately following the use of any kinetic impact projectile or any chemical crowd control agent by any police officer or any law enforcement officer working in the City of Boston, all police, excuse me, all body camera footage relating to the use of such weapons must be maintained and preserved by BPD and must be produced to the Boston Office of Police Accountability and Transparency, and to any state agency which has an oversight responsibilities for law enforcement agencies for departments within 10 business days. The passage of this docket will regulate the use of CCAs and KIPs by the Boston Police Department and all law enforcement officers acting under Boston Police Authority in the City of Boston. This ordinance applies to peaceful protests and demonstrations and provides safeguards by allowing the use of such CCAs or crowd control methods should ongoing acts of violence occur and other reasonable means of de-escalation are insufficient, provided that certain conditions are met. The amendments provide preservation of body camera footage and adding reporting requirements, which increases transparency and accountability. Essentially, this is setting a standard for the use, explaining when the use of KIPs and CCAs may happen in the City of Boston, and also making sure that we are very clear about the transparency in the conversation that happens after they are used, if they are used. This was, we felt, the most reasonable back-and-forth ability to balance the very basic needs of the Boston Police Department, to control crowds, but also the civil liberties and the physical safety of the public. To be very clear, again, this applies to protests. So on one stop, if there's violent actions that are going on, there is, there is not the same limitation that's required if it's between one police officer and an individual. Same thing, if there is going, if they see violent acts or destruction of property, again, there is an exception to this ordinance. But we, we felt, after much discourse, and I want to, again, thank the cosponsors for their patience in having us go line by line, that this was the most reasonable way to have transparent, safe protests, and also have a warning system to allow for people to leave a moment and leave a protest that may be escalating without being subject to tear gas or kinetic impact projectiles. So I submit this report recommending that the docket ought to pass in an amended draft. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Edwards. And a quick thank to, big thanks to Kerry Jordan from Central Staff and Peter Favreito from my team for helping me swap out with a, a better, better computer to continue this meeting, which means I can now call on any, if the authors would wish to speak on this or just get right into the vote. Chair recognizes District Counsel from Hyde Park, Counsel Royal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, and that sound quality is A+. So thank you, Kerry. So I just want to start by thanking Counselor Andrea Campbell for her partnership on this. I also want to thank Counselor Edwards for just running really thorough working sessions on this and making sure that we did go through this line by line, in some cases, word by word, to ensure that this entire ordinance did what we wanted it to do, no more, no less, and was done in such a way where we were protecting people's rights, but also making sure that we weren't creating these sort of unreachable, unmeatable goals. And so that was really important to us, to get this done. I also want to thank everybody who's voted on this previously. We obviously did pass this, so thank you to the counselors who did that. And thank you to the ACLU and the National Lawyers Guild for being really creative with us during these hearings to ensure that we were creating language that didn't go too far in terms of what it restricted or creates sort of unintended consequences, which, again, thank you to Counselor Edwards for just making sure that everything was thorough in such a way where we weren't creating language that might create an unintended consequence somewhere else. Though I know there's counselors on, on this council, including myself, who would support a complete ban, and this is not that, I do think this is an essential first step to protecting residents of Boston from indiscriminate, dangerous, and sometimes even fatal impacts of these devices, especially during lawful protests or demonstrations. Just so folks understand the importance of this, at least to me as a maker, these are weapons that technically can't be targeted. They're things that hit in areas, they're sort of area control issues. And so if you're sort of shusing these, we've seen the unfortunate consequences in the City of Boston with Victoria Snell Grove, rest in peace. And we know that there's certain instances where something like this can't really be controlled. And so if we're going to allow the usage of things that are abandoned warfare or indiscriminate can have an impact on somebody who is not the person for whom they wish that impact to be on, I think it's incredibly important that we use the most restrictions and the most protections that we're able to do. This obviously is not a complete ban, and I understand for some people that will be disappointing, but I do believe that this is something that, through consensus, will protect the residents of Boston while also creating protections there that, that will allow for the safest possible usage of these same materials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Campbell, do you wish to speak on this?
I'll just be quick, because Counsel Royal summed it up well, and I want to thank him, of course, for his partnership on this ordinance, and Counsel Edwards and your team for shepherding us through the process, and Counsel Royal's team as well. And my chief of staff, Ellie, there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of paperwork and emails to get this done, and so really grateful to each and every one of you, and of course, to the residents who testified, who shared their personal stories with respect to very painful incidents. Obviously, Counsel Bach shared her own experience, too. So just grateful to each and every one of you. I won't belabor the point, and hopefully, this reasonable piece of legislation will be supported by every council colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0369, Counsel Edwards, as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0369 in a new draft. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0369, Counselora Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselora Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
No.
Counsel Asabi George, no. Counsel Flaherty?
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn?
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
No.
Counsel O'Malley, no. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. President, docket number 0369 has passed, seven votes in the affirmative and five votes in the here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please now read dockets 0550 through 0557 together?
Thank you. Docket 0550, Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0550, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $1,832,180 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Title III C Nutrition Service awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. Docket number 0551, Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0551, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $1,456,653 in the form of a grant for the FY22 State Allocation, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. Docket number 0552, Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0552, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $1,056,840 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Council on Aging, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0553, Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0553, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend an amount of $966,932 in the form of a grant for the FY, the FFY21 Title III B Supportive Services, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human, of Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. Docket number 0554, Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0554, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and extend the amount of $406,080 in the form of a grant for the FFY2021 Title III A Area Plan Administration, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submit a report -- Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. That's right, I had oral surgery, so I hope everyone can understand me. I feel like I'm slurring my words.
You're doing great, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. 0455, Committee on Strong Women, Families and Community, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0555, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $286,860 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Senior Companion Program, excuse me, awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Services, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. Docket number 0556, the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Community, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0556, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $173,589 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Long-Term Care Ombudsman Services, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. And docket number 557, Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities, to which was referred on April 14, 2021. Docket number 0557, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $137,753 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Retired Senior Volunteer Program, awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Services, to be administered by the Age-Strong Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Chair now recognizes Counselor Liz Braden, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. That was an omnibus set of orders that you just read out. The Committee on Strong Women, Families and Communities held a public hearing on dockets 0550 through 0557 on Friday, April 23, 2021. Unfortunately, due to a family conflict, I was unable to chair that hearing, and I want to thank President Pro Tempore Matt O'Malley for stepping in at short notice. He is the Vice Chair of the Committee, and I thank him for his flexibility and taking charge of things in my absence. At the hearing, the Age-Strong Commissioner Emily Shea was there, the Age-Strong Director of Administration and Finance Frances Thomas, and the Deputy Commissioner of Advocacy and Planning Melissa Carlson testified on behalf of the administration. The Commissioner explained that there had been amount changes in dockets 0550, 0553, 0554, 0555, and 0556. The funding agency named updates to dockets 0551, 0555, and 0557 since the initial filing, so we had to update the actual sums. The funding amount changes reflect the final numbers of those grants, following preliminary allocation numbers that the city had received initially. As Chair of the Committee of Strong Women, Families and Communities, I recommend that docket 0552 ought to pass, and that dockets 0550 through 0551, and dockets 0553 through 0557 ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Braden seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage in a new draft for each of these dockets, with the exception of docket 0552. Madam Clerk, please take a deep breath, and then would you mind separately calling all of the rolls, beginning with, the roll calls on all the dockets, beginning with docket 0550?
Certainly. I just mentioned it, I was just afraid you couldn't hear me, but you can.
Oh, no, 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 we're hearing a lot of the encounters, we take all the time, there's a lot.
Thank you. My pleasure, this is wonderful work. 0550, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0550 has passed unanimously. I'll just continue along.
Please, thank you, Madam Clerk, that's wonderful.
Docket number 0551, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0551 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0552, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley. Counsel. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0552 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0553, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janie.
She's not here.
Oh, my gosh! My gosh. Yes. Pardon me, Madam Mayor. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0553 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0554, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, aye. Yes, I'm sorry. Counsel Braden.
All aye.
Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0554 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0555, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach. Counsel Braden.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edward's.
Yes.
Counsel Edward's, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0555 has passed unanimously. Docket number 0556, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counsel Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0556 has received a unanimous vote. And docket number 0557, Counselora Royo.
Yes.
Counselora Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0557 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And again, I know we miss a lot of things in this new world, and voice votes are certainly one of them, so we're looking to having voice votes on these wonderful dockets again soon. Dockets, make sure I have this right, docket 550 through 557, with the exception of docket 552, have all passed in a new draft, so thank you, and thank you, Chair Braden. Moving on to, again, matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets 0524 through 0531 together?
Certainly. Docket 0524 through 0526, orders to the FY22 Operating Budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the School Department and other post-employment benefits, known as OPEB. Docket 0527 through 0529, orders for capital fund transfer appropriations. And docket 0529 through 0531, for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counsel Kenzie Bach, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Chair Bach, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to all counselors who have been present as we've been starting the city's second virtual budget season. This week so far, we've had three budget hearings and one public working session, so to kick things off, we had the A&amp;F team come and provide a budget overview on Monday morning, including an overview of revenue, and counselors asked good questions about plans for recovering from COVID-19 and building a more equitable and sustainable city post-pandemic. We also did talk about the interaction between the federal funding and the city budget, and how to think about appropriate oversight for that going forward, and the council's role and all of that. And discuss, again, the fact that due to the city's heavily property tax-based revenue base, we are in a stronger position than many municipalities, even as we wait for those economic revenues, like our excise taxes and such, to come back. On Monday evening, we had a public working session to go over the budget process and talk about how residents could get involved, and we had some residents come and ask their questions about the budget, so that was great. And then yesterday, we had BPS join us in the morning for an overview hearing, and then in the afternoon for a hearing focused on school budgets. We're going to have a number more BPS hearings throughout the process, mostly on Tuesdays, and I think counselors raised lots of specific questions about particular schools, build BPS was a big area of interest. Again, the federal funding, I certainly expressed my view that we need to know a little bit more about how BPS thinks it's going to use its FY22 federal funding in conjunction with this budget, and yeah, just lots of questions raised, and I would encourage counselors to come to our working sessions next week and help get a bunch more questions from BPS out, so that we can direct them to the appropriate hearing, since we have so many with them. I really want to emphasize, Mr. President, that tonight we'll have a public hearing where residents can share their priorities for an equitable recovery. As you've said and made it clear with starting this new committee and everything, like the council has to play a critical role, I think, in making sure that the hope of the residents of Boston for real accountability around this money, and the ability to see it have an impact, to make sure it's spent responsibly, doesn't set us up on cliffs, it really makes a difference and puts us on a strong basis to have a long-term equitable recovery, that onus is on us. And so tonight, if residents want to share their thoughts, we'll have the first of 3:00 we'll have the first of 3:00, 6:00 p.m. public testimony hearings we're planning throughout this process. And so people can come to any of those. They can come to the public testimony portion at the end of any of our department hearings, but tonight at 6:00 is the first one of those. And so I would just love colleagues' help in letting people know, especially if there's somebody who's been bending your ear about the city's federal money should really be spent on XYZ, like, you know, tell them that here's, tonight's a good time to stop by the Zoom and say a few words about that. We're going to keep having staff clinics on the staff side. Next week, well, starting Friday. And then the following week will mainly be council working sessions, where we get those questions on the record that we send over to the administration. I think we found last year that that helped us have much more substantive hearings with them. So I would just really urge colleagues to join us for that or to send questions in advance. We do need to be able to read the questions into the record. So rather than sending them after the fact, like last year, if people can get those into us by the appointed time for the different departments, that would be hugely helpful. My last plug, Mr. President, is just to remind people that if they want, if they're watching this and they want to get involved in the budget, you can go to boston.gov/council-budget to see the whole calendar and see how you can testify and everything. There's also a dedicated page about testifying, whether by emailing us or posting a video or showing up in person, well, virtually in person, at boston.gov/budget-testify. So, you know, really looking to have as much involvement as possible. And again, every colleague joined us for the hearings over the last two days. Really appreciate that. And we're going to be hearing from Arts and Culture and Tourism and Law tomorrow morning. Arts and Culture and Tourism, when we planned this hearing, we thought that this was going to be a relatively routine revolving fund conversation. As it turns out, both of those departments are in line for significant increases proportionate to their budget in the proposed budget from the mayor. So we're looking to really have a more substantive conversation around their whole departments because of that. And then tomorrow afternoon is Capitol, which is so critical. And then Friday morning, we'll sort of start our run of working sessions. So thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President, and thanks again for everybody in the council engaging with the process.
Thank you, Chair Bach, for, again, I know what will be an exceptional process, transparent, open, and make sure that we run as ecumenical a process as possible. So well done last year. Look forward to your continued leadership in the space. Dockets 0524 through 0531 shall remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to motions, orders, and resolutions. Would you please read and place before the body docket 0600?
Certainly. Docket 0600, Counselor Mejia offered the following ordinance to create a task force to address literacy rates in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to just take a quick moment to thank you for all your hard work and rallying us up. In regards to this particular ordinance that we are filing today, we all need to acknowledge the tremendous privilege we all have that allow us to communicate with each other on a daily basis, through emails, text messages, city forms, and other paperwork. Both my mom and I came to this country from the Dominican Republic and not being able to speak, read, or write in English. My mother never got an education past the third grade and to this day even struggles to read and write in her own native language. This is a reality for a lot of families across the city of Boston. The fact of the matter is that you want to have access to the most important vital city services, you need to have some level of reading comprehension in order to fill out forms, access city websites, and respond to outreach via email. That is one of the reasons why we're filing this ordinance today, to create a task force to address literacy rates in the city of Boston. This task force will do three important things. First, it will be a way to keep more accurate data on literacy rates within the city. The most recent data provided by the National Center for Education Statistics for Literacy Rates in Suffolk County was in 2003. That's 18 years ago. We need to do a better job in the city to understand the scope of literacy in order to find new and creative ways to provide services. Second, this task will, this task force will work to find ways to make city services more accessible to the people who struggle with reading and writing, either because they cannot read or write in any language or because they're experiencing dyslexia. This could include text-to-speech programs using different fonts that are more reader-friendly for people with dyslexia and more. Finally, this task force will look to see how the city can boost literacy rates for both adults and children through substantive changes to our education curriculum and through workforce development training. While we need to meet people where they are when it comes to their reading comprehension, we also need to create avenues to let people expand their abilities, which can lead to greater job opportunities. Boosting literacy among our student population, particularly our immigrant and ELL students, will work to put an end to our school-to-prison pipeline. I know people tend to look down on task force, but in this instance, we really, literally do not even know what we don't know. Reaching out to people who cannot read or write to learn more about how to provide care for them is a challenge because our whole institution of gaining knowledge is based on written surveys and emails. When we wrote our language access ordinance to include text-to-speech services for people who cannot read or write in any language, we got pushbacks specifically because the city does not know where to start when it comes to providing these services. So we're creating this task force in order to build an action plan that the city can implement to start providing services that are accessible to everyone. We had the pleasure of working alongside Edith Brazil and Elizabeth Santiago on this project. So thank you to you both for all your hard work. We look forward to working alongside our colleagues to help get this passed. And I just really want to iterate how important it is for us to really think about the school-to-prison pipeline when we think about the McKinley students, oftentimes who are ending up in DYS. And that's because their social and emotional trauma is largely impacted oftentimes because they're struggling to read and write and the embarrassment that comes along with it. And I think when we're talking about our returning citizens who are coming back, who are also struggling with reading and writing, they can't find jobs because they can't fill out applications. So it's a vicious cycle. And while we're looking at the bigger picture, our hope is through this task force is to be able to do something that might be a small step to addressing the poverty that continues to persist in this community, to really figuring out how we can even look at literacy as a way to reduce some of the violence, because I think that all of those things are interconnected. So we're hoping to get to work and really appreciate everyone's support on this.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Madam Clerk, the President had asked me to just manage while he's rebooting for technical difficulties. So I had seen that Counselor Asabi George had had a hand up?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you very much, Madam interim, interim, Vice President. Yes, my hand raised feature is doing nothing, but apparently it was up, although not showing up. So I'm grateful that you saw me. And I just want to, please, Madam Clerk, add my name to this hearing order, this item that is before us, and thank you to the maker for putting it before us. I think that for, when we think about literacy across the spectrum, I really appreciate Counselor Mejia's look at literacy across the spectrum, how it is more than just what we're doing in our schools, for example. And that's often where we sort of keep that conversation. So I'm grateful to her leadership on this and appreciate the look of, the look at literacy, again, across the spectrum. So please add my name, and I look forward to this hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other counselors who wish to speak? Including some whose hand, raise-hand feature may also not be quite working? Okay, hearing none. Counselors, could you raise your hands to sign on, please? Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty? Please add the me, I don't know what the term is right now. And, um...
Did you call me Counselor Wu? I can't...
Oh, no.
She didn't.
Okay, good. I saw my husband. He should say hello. He was on video. Sign me onto this awesome ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please add Counselor Campbell. Did I miss anyone else? Okay. And Madam Clerk, I assume this is going to get assigned to the Committee on Government Operations?
Correct, Counselor. Would you like me to read docket 0601?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Docket 0601, Counselors Mejia and Bach offer the following ordinance to establish systems in tracking vacant commercial properties in the city of Boston.
Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't know what to call you either, but thank you, Counselor Wu. Okay. So thank you to Counselor Bach and her staff for working alongside us to bring in this ordinance to the council and to my Chief of Policy and Communication, Jacob de La Cour, for his relentless people policy, community-led, just like embracing that whole way of how we work. So thank you to him and his work in that space with, alongside us. And we would not be here today about this subject, we would not be talking about this subject today if it wouldn't have been for the hard work of community advocates, Darrell Weathers and Jacob Lithworth. They have been working tirelessly with our office for the better part of a year to boost awareness of the issues of vacancies across the city of Boston. From our Housing Policy Summit to our hearing on commercial vacancies to this ordinance, they have been leading our office on this issue. Tackling commercial vacancies is something that the council has been working on for a long time, since before our office got here. Our ordinance addresses a crucial aspect of commercial vacancies out on the streets in Boston. We know that there are vacant units, but we have no clear way of tracking them in order to create economic opportunities within them. We are creating a system that allows the city to get a better understanding of the scope of the commercial vacancies by using readily available data, such as POS machines, 301 calls, and other reports. By putting all of this together, we will create a database of vacant commercial sites, knowing where they are, where there are vacancies, and how long they have been vacant. This isn't exactly the most glamorous policy out there, but it is a crucial one in order to create avenues for small business development in the neighborhoods that have been most devastated by COVID-19. By knowing the scope of the problem, we are better able to direct attention, funding, and programming to help small businesses thrive. We are incredibly excited by this project and look forward to working alongside our colleagues and advocates in order to get this passed. And I should definitely be using my glasses, but I just wanted to thank Counselor Bach for just leaning into this conversation and bringing such thoughtful ideas, and our advocates for bringing this to us. And, you know, one of the things that we know in our community, especially when you drive through Mattapan, Jamaica Plain, parts of Roxbury and Dorchester and East Boston, everywhere you go, particularly in communities of color, you see a lot of empty storefronts. And it makes our neighborhoods look depressing. And we have such an amazing opportunity to really do a full audit, to figure out how we can bring not just businesses back to life, but our neighborhoods as well. So thank you.
Please to hand it back over to Mr. President Prottempe.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wu, for stepping in. Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Before we move on, Madam Clerk, would you please add my name as a co-sponsor of docket 0600? Apologies, the, my second computer that I'm using today had to reboot in the middle of that last, so I apologize for my absence, but thank you for continuing on without missing a beat. I take it from the end of the comments that we're now at docket 0601. Is there, I see the Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair. If I may.
Counselor Bach talk.
Oh, that's great.
Apologies. Thank you. Thank you very much. Apologies. The Chair now recognizes the co-sponsor on docket 0601, the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, yeah, I want to thank Counselor Mejia for really launching a conversation about this that I know is a follow-up on a conversation many counselors have had, including yourself, Mr. President, around this sort of long-term vacancy challenge. We see it in a number of places across my district. You know, I think, you know, even on Newbury Street right now, we probably got about 50 vacancies. It's pretty alarming when you think about the vibrancy of the street. And as Counselor Mejia said, it extends into every neighborhood. And, you know, as the council's pushed on this question, I think we've repeatedly run up into some certain kinds of walls. So one of them is that the way that our property tax information is collected really doesn't give us data with visibility on, like, functional, commercial vacancies. And so we're really thinking about how do we get that data? How do we get it in order to know the nature of the problem? How do we get it in order to create incentive programs? I mean, if you think about, you know, some of the money that we're talking about right now on the budget and federal side, we would love to have some kind of a program that's getting our local small businesses, our businesses of color, into spaces that landlords have vacant. But to be able to do that kind of matchmaking effectively, to incentivize the right behavior, to not frankly just reward landlords who maybe aren't trying to tenant, you know, you have to know where you stand. And so we're looking forward to a robust government operations process on this. But a couple of the thoughts that are embedded in the legislation are, one, to extend, we actually have a provision in IS, in the code right now where you have to register residential vacancy with ISD. So one thought is to kind of extend that over to the commercial side and have a registration there. But the other thought is to have, to have a sort of more proactive data gathering form that would give us a bigger picture, look at all of this, and people, and landlords would be incentivized to fill it out because it would be a necessary requirement for getting kind of economic assistance from the city for filling these holes. And then a third thing is actually to really look at the resources we have at the BPDA research side. It's come up in the course of this crisis that, that they're, they actually have substantial economic data, including some access to point-of-sale data, which can give you a more kind of real-time sense of what addresses businesses and isn't taking place in. So this is a kind of all-of-the-above approach to trying, you know, I think we all as counselors get frustrated and our constituents get frustrated when there's a problem we can really see and the city doesn't have the data to match and take action on it. And so our goal with this ordinance is really to fill that gap, especially in a moment where if we don't have a proactive strategy for getting our local Boston businesses into great retail spaces and revitalizing our Main Street, we absolutely stand at risk of losing those spaces to deep-pocketed, large chains who are like the folks sitting with capital in this crisis. And to banks and, you know, again, basically whoever is a flush in a moment where a lot of our smaller proprietors are not. And that would just be a real shame for the long-term commercial vibrancy of the city and for economic equity in the city. So I'm really proud of working with Counselor Mejia on this and excited about the work ahead. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bach. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I appreciate, and I'm excited for this conversation. I want to thank the makers. I do want to thank also, I think it was Counselor Campbell and Counselor O'Malley, who actually held a hearing on high-end light and specifically talking about commercial vacancies, where we really went through all of the different ways in which we found throughout our neighborhoods that because of the unique position that they're in, they both hurt our neighborhoods by being vacant. But also, it's connected to the jobs. It's connected to literally the vibrancy and the economic attractiveness of our neighborhoods if you have a bunch of storefronts that are empty versus those that are filled with, you know, local businesses. We talked about having a matching system where, once we get this registry up and running, local businesses, smaller businesses, MW, VE businesses could be matched and at least be told where there are potential opportunities for them to locate. We discussed Loftel, which is still an ongoing issue in East Boston, where, again, at being a large would-be, one-day, hopefully, hotel, we just read also about how it was up for auction for $150,000 last, or two weeks ago, and then seemed to be pulled back. And again, one of the things that we really discussed and hope, I hope, comes back up again is the receivership policy that we have in the city of Boston. As though many of you know, that when it comes to residential units, you know, if the community rises up and begins to fix and work on the property, that ultimately they can be assigned a receivership. And any of the monies that they put in to painting and maintaining and helping the property, they can recruit later on when the property is either put into foreclosure or sold. And they, ultimately, all their efforts are put on lean on the property. That only applies to residential units. But I think that there's a way, and we should consider a way, in which we can also have that applied to commercial units. If we, as a community, put our money and time into maintaining our Main Streets, then somehow, some way, we should be compensated for it. So I'm excited for this conversation. Please add my name.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lydia Edwards. Seeing no more discussion, would any other counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Michelle Wu, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Anisa Asabi George, Counselor Michael Flaherty. Please add the Chair's name as well. And docket 0601 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read and place before the body docket 0602.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0602, Counselor Arroyo offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act relative to early voting options for city of Boston municipal elections.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it possible to hear 0602 and docket 0603 together?
No, we typically don't hear new things that are introduced. We have to introduce them, but, well...
So then I'll speak, I'll speak sort of on both in this one, and then we'll keep the second one brief. So these hearings, these home rule petitions, one, and first and foremost, I'd like to thank former counselor, I didn't get to serve with him, but former counselor Josh Zachem, who had been an advocate sort of staunchly for a number of these different things. But these were done in partnership with the Secretary of State's office, with the Boston Election Department, and with the NAACP Boston branch under the leadership of Tinesha Sullivan. And the goal for both docket 0602, which allows for early voting for city of Boston municipal elections and allows for no excuse vote by mail for city of Boston municipal elections, and docket number 603, which we'll get to, but allows for voters to register on the same day, is essentially, we know that these things work to increase voter participation, enfranchisement, and in the case of the situation we find ourselves in now, but not solely due to the pandemic, provide healthy ways and safe ways to vote. We know that nationally, voting rights and ballot access are under attack, and Boston has an opportunity... has an opportunity here to lead with proven policies and practices that both serve to further the health of the public and our democracy. That's why I believe it's imperative that we advocate for and implement these proposed reforms. These are things we've already seen work. One of the only sort of silver linings, I think, that I have found to have come out of this pandemic, there's two, I think, the increased access through online Zoom sort of profiling in terms of civic participation, but also the mail-in validating that was wildly successful with the presidential election here in Massachusetts. And so, I know that we know these things work. I know that we know we can do these things. And speaking with both the Secretary of State and the Election Department, they're adamant that we can do these things. And so, what these, what these things would do, and I value and welcome the council's input, so I look forward to the hearings and the working sessions that go into this to make sure that this is the best reflection of what we believe the City of Boston's elections should look like moving forward. But essentially, what these things do is allow for early voting for City of Boston municipal elections, allows for no excuse vote by mail for City of Boston municipal elections, and docket 0603, which will come after this, allows for same-day registration. And I just want to note that the vote that we just took at the beginning of this meeting on changing the election primary date was done, according to the City of Boston's Election Department, to accommodate vote by mail, but we don't currently have vote by mail. That hasn't actually, we don't actually have that scheduled. And so, this would be another way for us to signal that we want to see those changes made. That is why, I know that's why I voted to change that primary date. I also know that's why they suggested to move that primary date. And so, this would be sort of a joined action on that. So, thank you to the partners who have worked on this, both at the Secretary of State's office, the Election Department, and the NAACP Boston branch. And I look forward to working with all of you, both individually and together, on making sure that this is the best piece of election legislation that we can put forward for the city. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on docket 0602? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor on 0602? This is the early voting options. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Bach, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, Counselor Flaherty. Please add the chair's name. And docket 0602 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you now please read and place before the body docket 0603?
Right. Docket 0603, Counsel Arroyo offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act relative to same-day voter registration for the City of Boston municipal elections.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Counsel Arroyo, I assume you're waiving your right for a statement on 0603?
Just one, if I can make one statement.
Please, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Same-day voter registration is a term that has multiple meanings nowadays. And just so folks understand what same-day registration looks like for this home rule petition, same-day registration, as it applies to this home rule petition, means that folks who are looking to register to vote can register to vote on the actual election day. So, they cannot register to vote on any of the early voting days. They can register to vote on the election day, the final, and the primary day. The reason why we made that distinction as opposed to allowing people to just register to vote on any of those early voting days is in consultation with the Secretary of State's office and the Boston Election Department, what allowed for us to have our council in quickly was that they could sort of not seal those early vote ballots because they didn't have to clarify that those folks, they were already registered to vote here. If people are registering to vote on a date prior to those election days, then we would have to then come back on election day and confirm that they still live in the City of Boston or that they are duly registered in the City of Boston on election day for that vote to count, which would cause sort of a complication in terms of getting the votes pre-counted and pre-sorted. And so, that is why our same-day voting registration specifically speaks to the actual date of the primary and the actual date of the election, not for any early voting days. So, thank you, Counsel O'Malley, but that is why this is read that way, and that was done in consultation with the Secretary of State's office and the Boston Election Department as to what they believe was feasible and would work well for them.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on docket 0603? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor on docket 0603? Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counselor Bach, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Flynn. Please add the chair's name. And again, docket 0603 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you please read and place before the body docket 0604?
Docket 0604, Counsel Campbell offered the following petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the disability pension of Alan Curry.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the district council from Matapan. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I was having some technical issues. Thank you, you guys. So, first of all, I just want to flag a substitution. We substituted some language. Central staff will send it around. It is a minor, it was just a typo, so nothing substantive to the language. So, just flagging that, they will send it around.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll proceed, if that's okay?
Yes, please. So, central staff will now be circulating the substitute language that is technical in nature for docket 0604. Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Please proceed.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. This is a home rule petition calling for the state Boston Retirement Board to increase the accidental disability retirement allowance payable to Mr. Alan Curry to 100%. Mr. Curry is a retired black firefighter from the city of Boston. He joined the fire department in 1976, and as a result of injuries sustained while on duty on March 15, 1981, is totally and permanently unable to work again as a firefighter. On this day, two of his white colleagues poured chemicals down the drain of his stall and exposed him to toxic fumes in the shower. He suffered physically from the attack, getting second-degree burns in his lungs and developing chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. He also suffered mentally, exacerbating his previous diagnosis of PTSD, which he experienced and was diagnosed with as a result of his time serving in Vietnam. Mr. Curry's life has been marked by his service to this country and, of course, to the city of Boston. After he served in Vietnam for two years, he came back to Boston determined to make a difference and to become a firefighter, becoming the first black firefighter at Engine 52 in Dorchester as part of the 1974 Beecher Consent Decree. He worked there for five years. And as you can imagine, this traumatic impact has had and continues to have, or I should say, these incidents continue to have a traumatic impact on him. Since his forced retirement in 1981, he's been his own best advocate, pushing the city through legislative and legal action to grant him 100% of his pension. In 1988, he sued the city in Suffolk County Superior Court, and after five years, the city was ultimately found causally negligent. In 2009, my predecessor, actually Counsel Yancey, and giving credit to him, pushed for this and brought a similar petition before the council. It didn't go anywhere at that time. And so, Mr. Curry recently reached out again on this very issue and called our office, engaged our office. I've had conversations with him, along with Chloe on my team, who has had several conversations with him. And I also want to thank Counsel Edward's office, who we also talked to about this, given the fact that it is a home rule petition that we've looked at before. I think this is the time, of course, to do the right thing. Mr. Curry is an older now, an elder individual, but still is seeking justice, and this is time for us to give him just that. And so, I'm really happy to be introducing this. I hope all council colleagues, of course, participate in this conversation and hearing and engage in the process and look forward to getting this passed through the council and pushing for this to be implemented. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Campbell. The chair now recognizes the district council from District 5. Counsel Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'll just be brief. Thank you, Counsel Campbell, for bringing this forward. It is deeply unfortunate that that occurred to firefighter Alan Curry. It's always the right time to do what's right, and so I look forward to seeing this make its way through the process so that we can serve some measure of justice, even if it's justice delayed. Thank you, Counsel Campbell.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes the district, the district council from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, please, please add my name in support. Want to say thank you to my colleague Counsel, Counsel Campbell, for bringing this forward. And there's no time like the present to address an injustice that has been ongoing for a long period of time. I just, I just would like to highlight that someone that spent two years in Vietnam is a significant amount of period spending in combat. Usually, the tours are one year. In one year, you do have a lot of difficult challenges coming back, back to the states after, after that period of time. But two years is an exceptionally long time for anyone that ever served in Vietnam especially. So, you know, I support, I support this, I support this proposal that Counsel Campbell is bringing forward, and this firefighter has paid a tremendous sacrifice in service for our city and in service for our country. So, want to say thank you to Counsel Campbell for bringing this forward.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston. Counsel Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name to this home rule petition and through the chair to the maker, just if she hasn't already done so, just asking her to engage Local 718 as well as the Vulcans, given that once the matter, if the matter, when the matter passes the council and gets signed, it gets up to Beacon Hill, they'll be sort of a key, they'll be playing a key role in advocacy for its passage up there. So, if she already has done so, then I withdraw the question. If not, if I could just put that on the, on her radar. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm getting the affirmative, non, thumbs up that the author has indeed and shall indeed work with the Vulcans and other individuals and organizations to help advance this. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor, any further discussion on this docket? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please add counselors Arroyo, Flynn, and Flaherty as cosponsors. Please add Counselor Braden. Please add Counselor Mejia. Please add Counselor Edwards. Please add Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Wu. Please add the chair, and docket 0604 shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please now read and place before the body docket 0605?
Docket 0605, Counsel Edwards offered the following order pursuant to general law chapter 43b, section 10, to amend the charter of the City of Boston by submission of a question for approval by the voters.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're doing, what we're not doing. So, a quick background, as you know, last year, we voted in order to amend our charter and to submit that language to the Attorney General in order for her to assess the constitutionality of the language and prepare it for the ballot. Luckily, it has gone through that initial, initial vetting by the Attorney General. She came back with some suggestions, and that is what I'm now presenting to the body, those suggestions. There were some concerns about use of the word equal, and so, we wanted to make sure that we were clear on the actual roles of the mayor and the city council. And then, there was also some concerns about the specificity of which we were allocating participatory budgeting funds, to the point that they wondered if it could possibly or found that it may bump up against the actual allocation, special act allocation laws of the state of Massachusetts. And so, we wanted to make sure that participatory budgeting was still part of the conversation. So, we changed the language a little bit to make sure that it was part of that, but we didn't actually require certain amounts to be removed immediately from the general fund. It's a consistent of what we're doing right now. And then, also, we just made sure that, again, that it's very clear, the mayor still retains the power to originate the budget, and that we did, we made sure, again, that the BPS budget could be amended or discussed, but it had to be consistent with section 75 of the charter. The council would still not be able to interfere with BPS budget priority setting, but we would have, we would be able to allocate, for example, more money to BPS if necessary. We just wanted to make sure we were clarifying the budgetary procedures. So, everything that we had before still maintains, is still the same. We just changed the language to make sure that it was a little bit more clear, more clear per the suggestions from the Attorney Generals. I really do hope that we will get this through the council with the amended language. Again, just pursuant to the procedure, it would go back to the Attorney General. She would, again, make sure that it's clear or, you know, that she doesn't have any additional suggestions, and then it goes to the ballot. For those of you who were, can, may have questions about this whole procedure, again, we voted for it. It came from our body. It then went to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General found that the process for which it came to her was fine and also found that there were certain suggestions in language. And so, in just trying to make sure the language is clear, that is why I'm submitting this updated language to the body for your consideration. So, I hope that we, again, will move this as soon as possible, and it will be prepared for the ballot.
Counsel Flaherty, I think Counsel O'Malley had sent us a note asking if you would take over.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. So, the question here is from Counsel Edwards. She's making some changes to a, I guess it's in response to a written request to amend the city charter. Anyone of our colleagues have any questions through the chair to Counsel Edwards at this Seeing, seeing no hands, and it doesn't appear to be any questions. Then through the clerk, this is obviously, it's a written request and a response for Counsel Edwards. And is this a matter that will be placed on file, or is this something that's going to go to the Committee of Government Operations?
It would be in the Committee of Government Operations.
Very good. So, at this time, chair moves for the clerk to assign that matter to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could call the next docket number, please.
Point of clarification?
Go ahead.
Any of my colleagues would like to sign on, maybe?
Madam Clerk, yes. My apologies to the chair. Any of my colleagues at this time wishing to sign on may do so now. I see Counsel Bach, I see Counsel Flynn, I see Counsel Asabi George, I see Counsel Braden, I see Counsel Arroyo, I see Counsel Mejia, I see Counsel President Madam O'Malley, I see Counsel Wu. Please add my name, and if I've missed anybody, please speak of forever holding peace.
Counsel Campbell.
Counsel Campbell, there you are. Counsel Campbell.
I was looking for you.
All right, good. Counsel Campbell is on. Please, Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Campbell's name. And seeing no additional names, that matter will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Has the president's technical difficulties been restored?
Indeed, they have. Thank you, Counsel President Emeritus Michael Flaherty, as well as Counsel President Emerit Michelle Wu for stepping in. I wish we could give Kerry Jordan an additional Shattuck Award because he has come through again several times for me today. Thank you for taking over. I apologize, colleagues. I believe we're moving along now, Madam Clerk, to docket 0606.
Thank you. Docket 0606, counselors Campbell and Flynn offered the following order for hearing regarding the Office of Labor Standards.
Thank you very much. The chair now recognizes the district council from Matapan. Counsel Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you. I feel like I'm playing musical chairs because of internet issues in my house, so I feel...
I can relate.
Mr. President, thank you, and thank... supporting workers, particularly in this moment in time in COVID and coming out of COVID? An Office of Labor Standards could have the power to enforce labor regulations, of course, investigate violations of labor regulations, including collecting fines, fees, restitution for workers based on safety hazards, other things we have seen actually happen in the City of Boston, frankly, where workers have died and no accountability has seemed to happen. This is an office that could take the lead role in handling these types of cases. And while the city, of course, has incredible departments and folks doing a lot of work, sometimes maybe in silos, really looking at this hearing as a place to start the conversation on creating something similar here in the City of Boston. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for your partnership, and looking forward to a robust conversation, and, of course, other counselors participating as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Chair now recognizes the cosponsor and district counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to Counselor Campbell for including me on this hearing, starting a discussion on how the city can better protect our workers' rights. It's a critical issue in our city, as well as the possibility of establishing such an office in the City of Boston. As Counselor Campbell mentioned, cities such as San Francisco, Seattle, New York City have offices dedicated to enforcing labor laws, providing work and protection. And those offices have the authority to investigate labor violations, collect fines, and develop labor policies. COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen over the last year, the many inequities that our immigrant workers have faced, low-wage workers, workers of color, and many of them are essential workers who are on the front lines of providing critical services during this pandemic, keeping people alive, whether they're in nursing homes and washing down beds or they're cleaning bathrooms. But that type of work is critical. And we also have noticed, and we also have seen, that I've done a lot of work with Counselor Edwards on this issue, but we've also seen a lot of workers being exploited during this pandemic as well, especially our immigrant workers. I was on a picket line in Chinatown at a restaurant, then the same owner owned a restaurant in Cambridge that's out there as well. But during difficult times, it's always easy to blame immigrant workers for what's going wrong. Oh, it's easy to blame low-wage workers for what's going on. But what they need is, they need someone in their corner that backs them up and protects workers' rights to make sure that workers are treated with respect and dignity. So, I want to say thank you to Counselor Campbell for including me. I want to say thank you to Counselor Edwards for her longtime work on this issue as well, and my colleagues on the city council, who have always been there for working men and women that have been on strike, that have been exploited. You guys are always on the front lines advocating for our workers and their families. So, I want to say thank you to my council colleagues as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. Appreciate that. The Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just really want to thank Counselors Campbell and Flynn for filing this. I think it's a great idea for us to look into. I think that the reality is that if business wants something from the city, it knows that, like, you know, oh, the Office of Economic Development, that's probably like the place to call. And I think we want to be the kind of city where workers know who to call if they're experiencing a problem, if they're experiencing wage theft, as you referenced, Counselor Campbell, but really, any, you know, real, like, slippage or violation of labor standards. I think that while certainly all of us, you know, try to use our political platforms to advocate on behalf of workers, I don't think that, you know, having to chase all the different elected officials when you're being wrongly done by is, should be the only avenue for getting the city's attention. So, I think thinking about ways to create a sort of dedicated and official and clear way for workers to get that attention is a smart thing and would help us in the sort of continuing efforts to even the playing field in a very uneven America. So, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for proposing this, and please, Mr. President, add my name.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Kenzie Bach as a cosponsor. Seeing no further discussion, would any other counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Edwards, Asabi George, Braden, Arroyo, Wu, Mejia, Flaherty. Please add the Chair. And docket 0606 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. The Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Mattapan. For what purpose does the district counselor rise?
Oh, thank you, Counselor O'Malley, Mr. President. I actually was looking for reconsideration for previous dockets introduced by Counselor Arroyo. I think I was missed when adding my name to the election dockets.
Sure. So, you would like to add your name to both dockets?
0602 and 0603.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Andrea Campbell as an original cosponsor on docket 0602, as well as 0603.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you please read and place before the body docket 0607?
Thank you. Docket 0607, Counselors Mejia and Arroyo offer the following resolution, calling on federal government to cancel all student debt.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo and his staff for cosponsoring this resolution. Since we got into office, we have had the pleasure of working alongside Zero Debt Massachusetts, an advocacy organization with the mission of eliminating student debt. We held a hearing late last year on the need to eliminate student debt because we have known for years just how much of a burden this debt really is. Every single person in our office is working off their student loan debt as we speak. And student debt is one of the only kinds of debt that stays with you even after you declare bankruptcy. We learned during our hearing that Massachusetts has 855,000 student borrowers with a combined $33 billion in student debts. Let's ask again. This debt is such a burden that residents in Boston can barely afford to live here. We clearly have to do something. With a new federal administration comes opportunities to explore student debt relief. President Biden has, in the past, considered eliminating at least some sort of student debt. We are calling him now to go further into eliminating all student debt within his first 100 days in office. This will lift a major economic burden off of thousands of Boston residents and will pave the way for greater economic empowerment and opportunity for the people of all ages. From current students to grandmas and grandpas, we're helping pay off their family loans. This is such an important action, and we can support it. We ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution so that the City of Boston, with all its colleges and universities, send a message to the federal government that we need action. And I also want to give a shout out to Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, who has been leading this conversation on the federal level, and our previous colleague on the council, Counselor Janey, who filed this resolution with us last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes, thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Zero Debt Massachusetts for their leadership on this, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley for her leadership on this, Senator Elizabeth Warren for her leadership on this, and I look forward to seeing real action taken on this. For those who are burdened with student loan debt, the impact that it has on their lives is total. It impacts whether they can afford to live independently, own a vehicle, start a family. It is keeping millions of Americans from entering into the middle class, and it is especially harmful to people of color and socioeconomically disadvantaged who systematically have been burdened economically or have historically been excluded from economic opportunities and generational wealth. And so, these are the kinds of wide-sweeping actions that not only help lives, there was, unfortunately, the data on suicide for folks who are burdened with, these kinds of debt totals is tragic. These are the kinds of things that not only save lives, but help move our economy. Money that is saved from student debt doesn't just disappear into the ether. Those folks start to purchase vehicles, start to purchase homes, start to have families, and they start to contribute to our economy in different ways. And so, this is something that is good for people, good for the economy, and good for our country, and I hope to see that move forward where we are seriously talking about the cancellation of student debt, so that folks who made the steps to move forward and contribute to public service or to this country educationally with their backgrounds are able to move forward in a way that allows them to fully tap into our systems. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Mejia, and to Zero Debt Mass for their leadership on this, and former, to Mayor Janey for her former leadership on this as well.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on docket 0607? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor on docket 0607? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Bach, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Braden, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell. Please add the Chair's name. And I'm sorry, I assume counselors Mejia and Arroyo, you're seeking suspension of the rules? Or would you like this remanded to a committee? Yes. So, counselors Mejia and Arroyo are seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution?
Apologies, President, my camera was off.
Apologies, Madam Clerk. Please also add Counselor Lydia Edwards. And would you, seeing no objections to the suspension of the rules, would you please call the roll on the adoption of docket 0607? You are muted, Madam Clerk.
Sorry about that.
Quite all right.
Docket 0607, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Counselor Flaherty.
Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket 0607 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you now please read and place before the body docket 0608?
Thank you. Docket 0608, Counselors Asabi George and Edwards offer the following resolution in support of the I Am Bill.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Nisa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This resolution is in support of the I Am Bill, an act to increase access to menstrual products in prisons, homeless shelters, and public schools. The bill has been reintroduced again and will ensure that every school, homeless shelter, and prison in Massachusetts will provide free menstrual products. We are hopeful that the bill will move through the State House soon. I'd like to thank Mass Now for their continued advocacy on this issue, and many others, as well as Counselor Edwards for joining me as a cosponsor. I do ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution in support of menstruating persons across Massachusetts.
Thank you very much. Chair now recognizes the original cosponsor, the district counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is simply a matter of equity and recognition that there are many people who are unable to afford these products. It makes no sense that if we truly expect for people who are administrating to be part of our society and to participate at their fullest potential, that something that's very, very natural should also be accommodated for. We accommodate for all of our other natural functions in our bathrooms, and this is no different. At the end of the day, we need to make sure that we lead in equity, we lead in inclusion, and that we acknowledge that there's really no difference by actually providing all the resources we need for the people who need them. At the end of the day, I want to thank Counselor Asabi George for including me on this as a cosponsorship. Just some basic facts that we've learned. Unfortunately, there still is a silly stigma about administration at all, and we've learned that 78% of students at BPS come from low-income households, and as a result, and some of them are also facing homelessness. This further adds to whatever struggles they are dealing with if you're administrating and also homeless or in your low income and unable to afford the products. This is, builds on our conversation last year. Counselor O'Malley, as you know, we led together the resolution to push for, make sure that there was equity within all of our bathrooms, and this builds on then what the then-formal mayor did by applying and having a short, like a pilot program grant to make sure that there was funding and products that were free in our bathrooms. This is going to continue on with that conversation. So, I just want to say thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George, for pushing and moving, and thank you for including me, and I, again, move with her for hopeful passage today.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. And just to be clear, it was actually two years ago with our great partnership, and we really helped lead the way for many, many cities to follow. So, thank you for your partnership and leadership here and then. Any further discussion on docket 0608? Seeing none, would any counselors, please?
I would be remiss without mentioning also a great leader and colleague across the river, Counselor Manika Bowman, who actually led in the, excuse me, Cambridge School Committee. It was her ordinance and her actual movement that helped to make sure that there was actual legal requirements in the City of Cambridge Public Schools. So, I want to acknowledge her leadership as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. No, thank you for recognizing her. No further discussion on docket 0608? Would any colleagues wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Flynn, Braden, Flaherty, Campbell, Baker, Wu, Arroyo, Bach, Mejia. Please add the Chair, and I believe that is everyone. Counselors Asabi George and Edwards are seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0608. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0608, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0608 was adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to docket 0609, would you please place it before the body?
Certainly. Docket 0609, Counselors Flynn and Edwards offer the following resolution, recognizing April as the month of the military child.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes the district counsel from South Boston and a proud veteran of the United States Navy. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Edwards for partnering with me on this. April is an important month. It's the month of the military child. It was designated in '86 by Casper Weinberger, and it honors the sacrifices that military families make every year serving our country. There's an estimated 1.2 million children in the U.S. They face unique challenges as a result of their parents' deployment or being away oftentimes for months at a time. On average, military families move every two or three years, so military children have to frequently change schools and adapt to new environments, new friends. Transitions, challenges, disruptions can take a toll on a child for sure. April 15th of every year, the Department of Defense Education organizes Purple Up for Military Kids, a day to recognize military children. Military families play a critical role in our city. They play a critical role in our country, and when their parent serves, so doesn't the child, because the child sacrifices as well, and sometimes alone, without their mother with them or someone to support them. And grateful to the service of Counselor Edwards because she has a real, unique story about... about sacrifice and service to our country that I certainly don't. But I also want to acknowledge my two little kids, Caroline and Stephen, but thank them for their service and sacrifice, but also to recognize my wife, Pristine, as well. But honored to partner with my colleague and friend, Counselor Edwards. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Flynn. Chair now recognizes the district counsel from East Boston and a military child herself. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The other term that they use, military brat, might be awful every now and then. Depends on where you are in policy with me today, but I wear that badge proudly. My mother joined the United States Air Force in 1973, leaving Cincinnati, Ohio, to go on to serve for over 23 years. So she joined at the tail end of Vietnam and then left right after Iraq won. And I want to say, you know, I was born on a military base in Florida, and I traveled around the world with my mother. She was a single mom after my parents divorced, and one of the things, and there's a unique burden that you have when you're serving in the military, you do have to put country sometimes before family. That is a fact, and Counselor Flynn is fully aware of that. But when you are also a single parent and having to put country before family, and then wondering where your two six-week-old twin daughters are going to stay for three or four weeks, which is what happened, actually, and having to rely on other military families to take care of us when she would have TDYs, that's a special kind of burden that I want to uplift, because there are many, many patriotic American parents who are doing just that. There are so many who are out there without complaint, doing this hard work, and so many, they come in beautiful colors and different languages from all over the world. And I have had the pleasure of growing up on military bases to see being united under one flag and one culture. It is a special team and a special kind of community that we have. All of us understand what AFES means and what it means to stop at the BMX or post, if you will, if you're on the Army Base. These are all special things. But I'll tell you this, one of the things that I want to uplift is also the burdens of being a military child. You know, we, at our school, which was on the base, when Iraq One happened, we immediately had to set up therapy and group counseling circles for our, my friends, because while everybody else is talking about the war over there, my friends are talking about their moms and their dads and wanting them just to come home. And that's how, I guess, the lens of war is seen through a military child, which is your mom and your dad and wanting them to come home. And so when we talk about the month of the military child, let's not forget about those who are still serving abroad, those parents, sometimes single parents, and the children who just want their parents to come home. So I'm proud to be part of those, that special group of people whose parents proudly served this country. And let's also not, let's, let us not forget the parents who couldn't come home and the children who are left with the flags and with the confidence here. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Any further discussion on docket 0609? Seeing none, would any councilors wish to add their name as cosponsors? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Bach, Asabi George, Braden, Wu, Baker, Arroyo, Flaherty, Mejia, Campbell. Please add the Chair. And Counselors Flynn and Edwards are seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0609. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0609, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0609 was adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to personnel orders.
Very. Docket 0610.
Yeah, sorry, you guys missed me. Sorry, Madam Clerk. I'm a yes vote on that. Thank you.
I have you.
There may have been some connectivity, but Counselor Campbell will be recorded as a yes vote on docket 0609. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Docket 0610, Counselor O'Malley for District Seven offer the following order for an appointment of, for an appointment. Reverend, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just out of an abundance of transparency and openness, I want to explain what we're voting on here. A function of being the council president in the absence, of course, of a mayoral position is being acting mayor, which is what our former colleague on the council and acting mayor, Kim Janey, is. She remains the council president as well as the counselor for District Seven. That seat is not vacant, but she is, of course, a non-participatory member of this body, because you can't serve in both the executive and the judicial bridge. This is just a unique situation, which is why I'm explaining it before we take action. So this is a personnel order for a position, a staff position, in the acting mayor's District Seven office. So that is what is before us today. Again, it seems, the way it was written, it says for District Seven, and that's, I just wanted to offer some clarity to colleagues. So I am seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0601, this personnel order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Can, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question there?
Yes, but the Chair recognizes the district counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
And sorry, so if that is, so it's not budgeted for the president's office? It's budgeted for the District Seven office? Because I mean, with you doing the job as a president, wouldn't we want to support you more if that's, but it's not in the president's extra budget that they get when you become the president? Is there, is there a differential there?
No, that's a fair question. The, every counselor is allocated a certain amount of money, budget staff, and again, because there's, because the acting mayor is technically still the District Seven counselor that comes from the money that's available to her in that position.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Chair recognizes the district counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor. You're muted, Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, without, without me commenting on this docket, but are we able to somehow increase the operation budget of your staff? Just because you've been doing this job for a period, and I think you've done a great job, I'm sure you could, you could use the staff. Is there a way during this budget process that that issue could be addressed somehow, Mr. President?
I appreciate the kind words, and truly, I, as we all know, we are lucky to have incredible staffs and put myself around that. We have, as we change the rules, the typical allowance for the council president pro tem, which is my position, wouldn't necessarily transfer, but certainly appreciate you raising the point, and this could be something that, you know, warrants further discussion down the road.
Yeah, right. I think that would be important, at least having that discussion down the road, because the president pro tem plays a critical role if the council president leaves to become acting mayor, but we also want to make sure the president pro tem's office also has the necessary resources to do the job effectively as well. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, of course. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to say to Counselor Flynn that I do think that is something that we could explore in the budget process.
Great. Thank you. No, appreciate that. Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I just wanted to also rise to speak in favor of finding a way to get you, as Council President Protem, some funding for an extra staffer because of the new duties that you do have. And also, just for clarification, I know that council, well, I guess it's mayor, acting mayor Janey is also the counselor for District Seven. She also retains the title of council president, correct?
That's correct. I said that, you know, in my remarks.
Okay, so I was, no, I was literally me just asking for clarification in terms of how these titles are working out. And so in terms of the other thing raised by Ed Flynn, I'm in full support of that. So Counselor Bach, if there's a way that the council can sort of accommodate that, I'd be all ears and all support. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate all of that. Was not expecting that, but appreciate that. And again, I think it's more of a reflection of my incredible team with whom I am very lucky to serve. So, thank you. Any further discussion on docket 0610? Okay, so Madam Clerk, I am seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0610, which is a personnel order for District Seven. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Personnel order, docket number 0610, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket 0610 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to late files. Informed by Clerk Feeny that there are zero late file matters. Thank you very much. Keep it up, team. Next, oh, I'm sorry, is there, there are zero late file matters, right, Madam Clerk?
Right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Now, moving on to the green sheets. Any members wishing to move a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Counselor Arroyo, I see your hand raised, but it may have been from the last conversation. Yep, okay. So seeing no takers on moving, removing anything from the green sheets, we will now move along to the consent agenda. Informed by the clerk, this is excellent. There are zero additions to the consent agenda. So the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Consent agenda, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to announcements.
I was told by the president that I am going to call him for announcements, and I'll make a statement, and then I'll call on the next person, and then, oh, Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Excellent.
Thank you for putting me on, what the world I was reading here, but you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mejia. I, sorry to spring that on you right before, but obviously, I wasn't expecting us to be there. And just so folks know, we have a rule in the council that the Chair of the meeting cannot speak on any matter, and as my colleagues know, I'm a stickler for the rules. So another provision in our rules is that the Chair, me, can call on anyone to act temporarily as Chair to then take over. So that's one of the reasons why you're seeing a hopscotch. It's kind of a fun thing, and I'm glad to see everybody get a chance to do it. So thank you, Counselor Mejia, and you are a natural right off the bat when I just sprung it on you. So I am asking unanimous consent to make a brief statement on two topics. The first being that I'm very delighted to report that next week, we will be having a soft opening of the return to the council chamber, the I Nella Chamber, for these council meetings. And what that means is that the councilors who are willing to or interested in participating in the chamber will be doing so. And I think, you know, the technical difficulties that I have had from my office just beyond this chamber, I am very excited for this opportunity. If councilors wish to perhaps delay it and not come into the chamber, we will still be operating under this Zoom mechanism, and individuals will be able to do so. This is a new change, and again, want to thank Harry Jordan, who I've mentioned three times at this meeting for very good reason, and Candace Morales and their incredible team for being able to facilitate this new technology. So any councilors who wish to be in the chamber next Wednesday for the council meeting, please join me. For others who wish to perhaps wait, or for whatever reason, want to continue to participate remotely, they will be able to do so as well. We will be using the screens in the chamber for the interaction. But I'm very delighted. To that end, any councilors who are in the chamber today and can assist Carrie and I for about five to 10 minutes after this meeting, we're going to do a quick run-through on some of the technologicals. So if you could just come by the chamber for a couple minutes, that would be great. We will, of course, be adhering to all COVID safety protocols in the chamber, including masks at all times, even while we are speaking, including distancing, which we are able to do because of the size of the venue. So I'm very delighted for that. It also, I want to underscore that hearings, so not the council meetings, not the council Wednesday meetings, but hearings will remain virtual for the foreseeable future, certainly that the request that I agree with, with the Ways and Means Chair, all Ways and Means hearings will remain virtual via Zoom through the end of this fiscal year and perhaps beyond. And that will allow for no diminishment of public input or testifying going forward. But the council meetings will at least begin with a soft opening back in the chamber week from today, and I'm delighted for that. Second of all, I wanted to use this opportunity to just acknowledge a great colleague in government to all of us, someone whom I've served for my entire time on this body, and those who've been involved in local government, even beyond that, is leaving his public official duties this week and moving on to a wonderful new sort of public-adjacent role. And I'm speaking, of course, about Chief Chris Cook, Chief of the Energy and Environment Cabinet. He is just a great manager, a really visionary leader, and one of the most genuine and funny people you will meet. Among the best advice I got from my predecessor, John Tobin, was to take the job seriously, but never take yourself too seriously, and I've tried to do that, and certainly Chris has. He ran special events for Mayor Menino before being tapped as the Parks Commissioner under Mayor Walsh in his first term, and then being promoted to chief of Energy and Environment. It is surprising to no one on this Zoom, and hopefully not to those watching, a lot of the success that we helped push, all mayors with whom we've served on the environmental and environmental justice front. Chief Cook was a huge part of getting us there, be it, you know, the plastic bag ordinance or renewable energy infrastructure or really aggressive climate plan. He really was the driving force. He is going to work as the executive director of the Rose Kennedy Greenway, so I know many of us will continue to get to work with him in that space. But I just didn't want this meeting to close without just thanking Chris for his legendary service to this city. We will miss him. I'm not nearly as eloquent as Kenzie Bach. I don't have any great quotations to close this with as she did last week, but I'm just really grateful for Chris's leadership and his friendship. We're excited, wonderful successor named, and the Reverend Mary Emma Whiteham, and looking forward to working with her in that role. She's terrific. Many of us know her. But did want to acknowledge and thank Chris Cook for his many years of service. This is a far better city because of his leadership. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You're up, Julia.
(inaudible). Oops. I'm up. Okay. Oh, I get the whole, for the whole duration of this, not just, okay, who else would like to speak? I see you all playing jokes on me here. Some hands go up and then they go down. Okay, Counselor Flaherty, at-large city counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's appropriate to adjourn in someone's memory right now, I would like to do that. On behalf of Counselor Ed Flynn and I and all of our colleagues, I want to adjourn in the memory of the legendary Boston Fire Commissioner Leo Stapleton. I regret to obviously announce his passing. He rose through the ranks and served our city from 1951 to 1991. He was a leader of the firefighter and took the initial initiative on firefighter safety. In other words, we've heard a lot about that in recent budget hearings, but it all started with the now-late, great, legendary firefighter. He leaves a great Stapleton family here in our community of South Boston, and he will be missed. He was my mother's pal up at St. Bridget Church and always had a nice thing to say, a warm smile, and as a result of which, we just want to offer our condolences to the Stapleton family and to the entire community of South Boston, everyone that knew him, as well as his firefighter family that was, you know, a big love and a passion for him, was making sure that he looked out for his members, in particular, his members' family. And he was probably also one of the first commissioners that took on administrations with respect to getting and replacing fire trucks when they were aging and or breaking down. So had a great relationship, obviously, with our colleague, Counselor Flynn's dad, and he will be missed, a legend as a firefighter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very, excuse me, thank you very much, Counselor Flaherty. Certainly add Commissioner Stapleton to the closing memory of. Chair now recognizes the district council from Dorchester. Counselor, thank you, Counselor Mejia, for taking over. Chair recognizes the district council from Dorchester. Counselor Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to use this time to talk about Alma Walberg, who we lost last week. Alma is one of those strong Dorchester mothers, raising mostly boys in the 70s and 80s in Dorchester, and they all turned out all right. Didn't always, weren't always all right, but similar to my family, will all get through. Alma was just great when it came to advice and straight advice. She didn't mince words, and I just want to, you know, say her name and let her family know that she is in our prayers, and she was a great woman and a big loss for the Dorchester community.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Baker. She was amazing. This is a Titanic loss for the city. Thank you. Chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. And on behalf of myself and Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Baker, our good friend Bobby Walton, many of you may have known, he also passed away recently. Went to the funeral mass at Gate of Heaven Church in South Boston. But Bobby was a great friend of South Boston, active in many different organizations, especially the youth sports programs, and he was an outstanding baseball player as well, but always willing to help people, always helping young people mentoring or for the sports program. I knew his son Robbie, who's a police officer. His son Robbie was my son's youth counselor up at the Tynan Community Center. So we want to say to the Walton family that, you know, our prayers are with you during this difficult time, and as Counselor Flaherty mentioned, certainly Leo Stapleton, and my cousin is married to Leo's son, Kathy Downs. So I want to say our prayers are also with my cousin Kathy, but also the entire Stapleton family. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Seeing no further announcements, we are going to adjourn our meeting today and fall in honor and in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Arroyo, Janice Janey and Bao Seju Antoine. For counselors Arroyo and Campbell, Beth Williams. For Counselor Baker and the chair, Alma Walberg. For counselors Flaherty, Flynn, and the entire body, Boston Fire Department Commissioner Leo D. Stapleton. For counselors Flynn and Flaherty, Bobby Walton. And on behalf of the entire council, Terrence Clark, former Vice President Walter F. Mondale. A moment of silence, please. Before we adjourn today's meeting, I wanted to acknowledge that music will be playing as we close out. Again, as we began recognizing Jazz Week and Jazz Day, and thank you to Counselor Wu for that, our friend Pauline Bilskey has submitted a recording of the Jazz Alchemy All-Star Quartet performing "Peace on Earth" by Johnny Coltrane. So I'd encourage you all to listen to it as we close out. Thank you all. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals whom we had a moment of silence for. And we are scheduled to meet again next Wednesday, May 5th, at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.